Welcome, everyone. Okay. I am going to turn the agenda over to Mr. Mike to talk about awards, recognitions, and celebrations, and I know this is a busy time of year.
It is. There are lots of things to celebrate this time of year. Elms Road Elementary School held their Leader in Me Leadership Day on Monday. I know that several of you were able to attend and appreciate you making an effort to be out there. Kids had a great experience. Morris Elementary School held their Jump Rope for Heart this week and they earned $4,000. Their 20-year total is now over $107,000 that Morris has raised for heart disease, so that's a great accomplishment. The high school student council this weekend is sponsoring a color run this Saturday. And something else exciting to celebrate about our band program, the high school band earned a one rating at the state band festival this week, which is very difficult to achieve. So we're very proud of them. And you can see pictures of all of those events if you go to our Twitter feed. You can see senior exit presentations and pictures from these events if you go there. And then I'd also just like to commend Jack Bedell from Elms Road on his retirement. So he's putting in for retirement and he's been quite a great teacher for a long time at Elms and we've just served in this district as an administrator as well, so happy to wish him the best of luck.
Good guy.
So, absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on, we have a consent agenda, need a motion to approve. Tell me, Stacy, Mike, any comments or questions?
I just had one. Just for the record, I was called by a few people today to vote no and not allow Tammy Gray to retire, but I told the other six would probably vote yes and how could I deny her that, so anyhow, have some fun with Mrs. Gray.
That's right.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, back to you, Ben, for the superintendent report.
All right, so this week had the sad news that the state superintendent, Brian Wiston, passed away. He passed away from battles with health issues that he's had. I consider Brian to be a friend and definitely will be a loss at the state, and so we'll, you know, wish the best of luck and prayers about to his family. The staffing process here is in full swing, and so we are going through, looking at our numbers, how many students we have that we're projecting at each grade level, trying to predict that kindergarten number, which is always tricky. I think one of the things that will help us this year is that we are offering a May kindergarten registration date. So we typically have just done the March dates, and so we did the March dates, but now we're also offering a May date to hopefully capture some of those children before they get to the summer months. So we usually have people signing up even as school has started, but we're hoping that we can capture as many people as we can at this time so that we can properly prepare for the adequate number of teachers for each grade level. I wanted to update you on something in the area of special education. I've asked Mr. Gushon to kind of talk for a second. We have been starting something that I've mentioned in the past, but very powerful results that are being seen by what's called a consultative approach, which is a way that we staff for special education. And so, in a traditional sense, you might have a special education teacher going into a classroom with a general education teacher, and then, you know, there's a large, large number of special education students that might be in that course, and they travel together almost every hour of every day, and it can become somewhat challenging, and we've seen very minimal results in the past with that model. And so we thought we would try something different. This year we've been trying a research-based approach called consultative model, and Derek, I'll just let you kind of share a little bit about that.
I think Ben shared almost everything.
No.
Yeah, we have an opportunity of reading an article trying to close the achievement gap with our special education students. Read an article, started talking with a couple colleagues and peers, how can we change the delivery model within our service providing that we provide and achieve that maximum growth for all our students. So started talking about this with Rod and Ben, said how there's this consultative approach, and Ben's like, this is what we used to do in Hartland. So we took a team out to Hartland, observed and a lot of questions for general education, high school, special ed and general ed, had some middle school staff members as well, got the approach that we did this as a model. So we started a pilot program. This year we went with the high school and the ELA department and sixth grade and middle school. Tremendous amount of success, a tremendous amount of excitement from staff. Still have some people that we're bringing on board that are reluctant to change, but I think the data is showing, we've seen tremendous growth. Had a special ed teacher email me to say the amount of growth, far, the students far surpass their growth that won't be expected. So very excited about that. And ultimately, it's a model where students, sometimes if you're in special education, you kind of are taken out of that general ed class and you're put into a special ed class. So not having access to that curriculum, sometimes you lag behind, you fall behind. So the model is really looking at keeping kids within that general curriculum, providing additional supports with the special ed teachers in that consultative model. So it also allows for, as we talked about in our MTSS structure, kind of that double dip to where they're getting general ed and special ed. So no longer do we have these large cohorts of 15 kids following each other, and then by the time fifth and sixth hour end of the day happens, we see behavior increase, we see, so we are strategically planning and scheduling for every kid, kind of breaking it into a quadrant of kind of high skill, high will, and we talk about kids that have high behavior needs, low behavior needs, so not matching up any of the four kids, four or five kids, instead of 15 or 20 even in some of our classes. So we're dividing that out, and what we've already seen by this pilot program, tremendous behavior reduce, truancy has improved, more kids passing classes, and it's just been overall tremendous growth within the ELA at the high school and also sixth grade and middle school. So now we're backing this out for all subject areas, six, 12 next year.
And we did do another site visit. You went out to...
I forgot to, yeah.
To Holt, right?
Yep, we also took a team out to Holt. Holt has also done this. Talked a lot with the special ed staff there, along with some general ed teachers and special ed teachers. We had a group of about 15 teachers between middle school and high school. The Holt people had about five to six years of data that they've switched to this consultative approach, and they've seen nothing but higher success than kind of that co-teaching model. So I've already had three or four people in the county contact me, what am I doing, what's going on, what are we running that's different. So very excited, and again, I think the data has already proven that it's a successful model. So we're rolling this out, like Ben said, six, 12 next year in all content areas. So it would be a big change in delivery service for special education department within Swartz Creek Middle School and High School.
I think one of the biggest things is when you have 15 to 18 students that have high, whether their behavior or academic needs, and you put them all into one space, and then you ask them to travel all day together, you're bound to have some issues. So what has been very powerful about this is that nobody has that group. Everybody is, they're kind of diluting that group of students down so that they have more energy and support for four or five kids at a time, and then the special education teachers are going through the classes as needed to provide that support to the general education teachers. So we're excited about that, and thank you, Derek, for sharing that insight. Anybody have any questions about that?
Just one. When did they start this program?
We started as a pilot this year with the sixth grade.
September.
Yep, and we started with the sixth grade and middle school, and then in the ELA department at the high school.
So Derek, when you said you have high will, high skill, and you have, you stratify them into quadrants, right?
Yeah, so when we're scheduling a kid, typically in a co-taught class, we would have 15, even upwards of 20 kids, and then they would go co-taught math, maybe co-taught ELA, and again, these kids are kind of lumped together. Now, instead of having whether it be academic needs, behavior, whether high skill or low will, whatever the reason why they're within a special ed class and they're provided that support, you take a look at that. So what I really want to avoid when we did the scheduling is three or four kids that are significantly low academically or have high, high behavior needs, so we divide that out. So now...
So you're mixing.
Correct. So now a general ed teacher's not going to have four or five kids that are going to be significantly high behaviors or kids that are extremely far behind. So this allows the general ed, excuse me, the special ed teachers working with the general ed teachers to kind of scaffold their learning and provide more support. And again, sometimes it's just when you're in a group with your peers, to act out is a little more socially acceptable. When you're not with the same group of kids that you feel comfortable with, we see a tremendous improvement in behavior.
What a great concept.
Just by simple scheduling alone, it's been tremendous amount of growth.
Do you get any data or feedback from the parents at all?
We haven't yet. We haven't yet. Only a couple via the IEP process. Actually, I've had more concerns as to what is it going to look like, how is it going to impact. Some of it is, okay, what, how is it going to be different? How are you going to continue to provide support? So we talk a lot about providing support for the teachers, providing support for the students. So it's kind of twofold. That special ed teacher who has that training and accommodating, differentiating, providing specially designed instruction, is able to work with the teacher and the students and pull them more closely. So in the past, I would be co-teaching with Rod as a general ed teacher, I'm a special ed teacher, I'm locked into that hour. If we're doing an activity that I'm not needed, I would still be in that hour. Now I have the flexibility to float and go into different areas and different classes where it's needed. So do they still have to provide the specialized instruction? Yes. Do they still have the IEP requirements? Absolutely. But now they have that ability to float to different classes. So it's going to, Holt was amazing. They gave us a bunch of forms, a bunch of different ideas, concepts, the special ed teacher there, the special ed director met with us, gave me a lot of things to, whether it goes all the way down to holding staff accountable. How do I hold staff accountable that are going to be not assigned to a class? So those are all great things that we're ready to go with. I probably should, and I think what I'll do is send out a staff or a survey to some of our parents just to get some additional feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek. Other couple things. The middle school did hold their spring band concerts this week, and those were very well attended. And there's a little bit of an insert in your board packet. The Swartz Creek area art guild has invited you out to the Swartz Creek High School art show. So if you're interested in seeing...
What's the date on that?
The date is May 6th through the 13th. It's an open.
Oh, through the 13th. I just saw this. Okay, thank you.
Yep, it's an open opportunity. So we have some really impressive artists. We actually have Cindy in our office. Her daughter was actually published in a recent, she's done the painting or the drawing of the gentleman, David Beckham, right out here on the picture. So she is very talented, and lots of people being honored. One of the things that we're trying to do as well, and Lorraine had talked about this before she left, but we're going to be, we have teachers who have been submitting at the elementary through high school level pieces of art, and we have some frames. So we're hoping this summer to update the artwork in here so that you can see some fresh pieces next year. And the art teachers are working on a little bit of an art recognition program where we actually can award at a board meeting, you know, to, you know, several of the artists that get, you know, selected to be displayed in here. So it'd be kind of neat. And that is all I have.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have several board subcommittee reports. You want to go first, Stacy?
Sure.
We have academic achievement and policy.
Yeah. For academic achievement, we went through the foreign language trips. And you're here, so if I mess up, or you want to add anything, please do.
Sure.
The foreign language trips, in June, they're leaving for Spain and Germany. In Spain, the cost of Spain is forty, $4,600. I don't have the one for Germany.
The one for Germany this year was about $3,700, and it's the next proposed trip that we're hoping to use, about $4,000.
Okay. They would like to have the opportunity to go every other year on a trip. The cost to the district is $0. They use Education First Tours. They said it's a great company to use. They would like the next trip to be in 2020. Let me see, I have my own writing.
Spanish would be to Costa Rica, and German would be to Prague, Vienna, I think.
Thank you. And every student has an op, has an option to go on two trips if they choose.
Yes.
And that's really all that I have, so if you want to add anything else, you are more than welcome.
Be great. Hi, I'm Breanna Wilson. I'm the chairman teacher. So the reason, we really want to start this tradition at Swartz Creek to go on these trips every other year, to really give more of a reason to take a foreign language. I think it can be hard for a lot of our population. I have some kids coming with me this year that have never been on a plane, and their parents have never been on a plane. And so for them to go to Germany and to see how other people live and use this language in a real con, context, not only gives them a greater purpose for learning German, but also makes them really understand that there's a world out there. And that's part of the reason we're so excited to bring our kids into the world.
Now, if you go as a chaperone, am I right, it's...
Chaperones are free.
Free.
Yeah.
Because I have so...
I know. I hear people be like, okay, when is it?
Yes, I'm going. I'm just adding that to my list here. Anyway, so thank you. Is there anything else? We messed over again.
Okay, any questions for me?
Yeah.
Where in Germany are you going?
Oh, this year we are going to Munich and Berlin.
You're going to Chaperone?
I live there, all right.
Derek.
Where in Spain?
I believe in Spain they're going to Barcelona, Madrid.
And so one of the things that we'd just like to get some direction, are you okay with an ongoing approval that would be, something that would be more of a consent agenda, so that we'll still, we'll still vote on it, but it's not going to be, we won't have a full presentation each time. It'll, you know, we'll have the details of the trip to you.
Absolutely.
And so...
Absolutely.
Yeah. It might make it easier for families to plan ahead.
So that's our goal. They know when they're in kindergarten. Oh, right, this is the year my child would be in high school, foreign language, that's the year they can go. So they can plan.
And you did say you could do some fundraisers and things to help, right along that...
Yes, definitely. At German Club, we did a fundraiser where we did gift wrapping and coupons at Barnes and Noble.
Yeah.
We raised a couple thousand dollars that way, so we've been able to help.
Right.
And that gives every student the ability in their high school years to go on two trips potentially.
Yes. Especially if they've started in eighth grade, but even if they start in ninth grade. Our, our idea is they have to have finished one year successfully of a foreign language, at least one, so they have some survival skills and they can really practice.
Yeah.
Going chaperones, there's no need.
Thank you.
Thank you for browsing the horizons of our students.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also talked about reading wonders. And Rod, you may play Ben if there's something I don't have. This program gives materials and structure. It's an elementary reading program. Third grade reading law is in place, and we need more materials other than Reader's Workshop. K through two literacy is one of the most important kinds, and that's really all that I, my bullet point, so.
So we've always had a balanced literacy program, and we run our Reader's and Reader's Workshop, K-5. Sirene piloted Reading Wonders two, three years ago. Under that is, as you've seen, some of the past board meetings is very nice, and while the structure of workshop is the way we want, strategies we want to use, what we're finding is we don't have the material to implement those strategies. And so it's just a K-5 reading program, and they're looking to run it in the same manner with more material, and they would update Sirene to three as well. So we'll have something as soon as the votes finish up.
Probably at the June, one of the June board meetings.
We also had the policy committee meeting, and we reviewed policies 1421, 3121, 4121. Do you want me to name all these? We just went through policies A through H, so.
Basically, the special release from technology and background check.
Yes, and your criminal history background. Yeah. Any questions, Stacy?
When you, when you're talking, when you're talking about the policy, we had an incident, I'm sure you're aware of it. I don't imagine the board is. They had an incident over at Deek where a seven-year-old brought his phone to school, and of course, we're kind enough to provide everybody with Wi-Fi. And he was showing some inappropriate pictures on his phone, which the teacher then got ahold of, which was then described as child pornography, which it was not. But it was then given to me at Clayton Township to investigate. It was sent into the crime lab, and it was found that it was not child pornography, it was just pornography. So I don't know what we can do to change our policies or maybe take a second look at them, but when the seven-year-old's out on the playground, there's not a lot of supervision. So while the Wi-Fi's a great idea, this kid had a broken phone that had no service except the service we provided it. And there we are, kid sent home, police are called. And so I think there's something that we may want to have, at least at the elementary schools, in reference to them bringing devices to school, or I know the parents will lose their minds about the time you tell them their kid can't bring a phone, but that was pretty innocent of how all that unfolded, but not so innocent when it disrupted the entire day, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it might be something that you guys can revisit and then bring back to the board because it did upset the Alphacard at Deek for the day.
I thought we had filters on the internet to filter any obscene...
Can't, well, you can't filter Wi-Fi.
No, I mean what they go to. Like, did he go to, or it was on his phone?
It's his device, yeah.
It was pictures on his phone.
No, it was an internet. It was something he probed up on the internet.
I didn't think they could go to the internet on there.
So the Wi-Fi does have content filters, but sometimes those, those filters are held with the ISD because that's where our fiber network is. And, you know, what Ken's saying is that, I mean, you can't, there's nothing that's fail-safe.
Can't media proof it.
Yeah, I mean, we do have, the majority of sites would be, you know, blocked and those types of things, but if there was access to something, you know, so it's, it's probably a good idea. In fact, one of the, and I'll just give this to you now, this is actually just a letter from Neola, and it's actually the executive director of Neola. They're, with everything that's been going on with social media and social media, this type of issue that Ken brought up, there's, this is the first time he's really ever done this, but they're putting out a standalone policy for social media that they're encouraging us to adopt before next school year. So we'll be getting access to that over the next couple weeks. And I think it raises an important question. Social media's become so commonplace, access to wireless internet has become so commonplace, that we need to be a little bit ahead of the curve in terms of how we address that. The differences between appropriate academic use and inappropriate use as being described, and then how we deal with that is important. So stay tuned. I'm going to be bringing you a standalone policy, and maybe there's an opportunity there to revisit what you're speaking of.
Well, I mean, I think this was totally innocent.
Sure.
I mean, there's no, I don't think there's any bad intent. I'm not sure a little kid like that could form too much bad intent, but the point being is it happened. And, and like I say, the phone, the phone had no service until we provided the service.
Right.
So, you know, that, that's, that's something that, you know, even, even the parents, I mean, they, they thought it was totally innocent giving the kid the phone. You know, but that's something, you know, I mean, we're providing, we're providing the service at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just kind of a heads up.
Anybody else have questions? That's it for me.
Want to go, Mike?
Sure.
Finance?
Finance?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, finance committee met on 30th of April. Under old business, the GISP transportation discussion regarding whether or not we would take over the busing is still being looked into. There's another meeting scheduled, and hopefully after that, a decision or recommendation will be brought to the board. Regarding the summer tax collection that we talked about, that was over budget in March, that was due to only two collections were taken in '16, '17, and this year, '17, '18, there's three to bring it back into cycle. And that's why it was over, and that overage has been taken care of with the budget amendment that we had last meeting. We received a budget status, revenue expense accounts as of 3/31/18, we're at 68.24% of the budget's been used. Check register, we reviewed all of the checks. There were 401 checks from February 22nd to April 25th. There were no voids. Those checks totaled $1,299. We had discussion on the following checks from the check register. Lust Albertson, which I didn't recognize and didn't realize it. Attorney Delacourt was on his own, and he joined Lust Albertson. So when you see that in the check register, that's the attorney, and that's for his services. National Environment, there was a check for $8,958, and that was for removal of the asbestos at the Little Dragons Building. Barber Marketing, $7,220 was for the purchase of a dance, the dance floor at the PAC. It's for tap dancing, and the studio Fenton Ballet required that for tap dancing in order for us to enter in the contract with them, which we have, and that contract runs approximately $5,000 for both the spring and winter programs that they put on. Other studios also will use that, and according to Mike Drudge, they pay between $100 and $600 when they use it. There was a check to LJ Electric for $1,675, $1,635, and I was told originally that it was for scaffolding, for the rental of scaffolding. Well, it ends up that it was, was for scaffolding, but it's also for lighting and the installation of this lighting. I noted that we have, have rented scaffolding quite a bit. So I got with RJ. RJ has suggested that we could use a towable scaffold. He's looking into it, researching it, going to look at a used one and new one, try to get some prices, and we'll talk about it at the next building and site meeting. There was a check from Two Flint Township for $35,994, and that was a result of the Michigan Tax Tribe Reunited findings. And we will eventually be reimbursed that through the state aid fund. The Little Dragons remodel bids are on the agenda. However, we didn't discuss it at the finance, we discussed it at the next meeting at the building and site, and Ben is going to be discussing it further tonight. Proposals have been requested for the '17, '18 audit, and the presentation is scheduled for 14 May, and on that day, a decision will be made as to which audit, audit firm we will use. We had no public comments. The next meeting was tentatively, or is, that was set for, for June, is tentatively set for May 21st due to a work schedule interference. We adjourned at 8:30.
So just one thing to add to that. I know, Tony, you're going to be available on the 14th of May, and so we scheduled that meeting. I know that you oftentimes will go to finance. Any of the, any of the rest of you that would like to go, that meeting, obviously, they're all committee of the whole, but that meeting is designed to be interviewing audit firms. It's typical that you would go out for bid every three to four years to look at a new audit firm. We've been with Yo and Yo now for a number of years. You, you can make whatever decision as a board you want in terms of who you have as an audit company, but we, we're putting it out in front of you so that you can make a decision and see, you know, if you'd like to stick with it or make an adjustment. So anyone that's interested, that's that May 14th date.
What time is that?
1:30.
Uh, 1:30, I think.
Okay.
It is 1:30.
1:30.
Any other questions for Mike?
Thanks, Mike.
Building and site.
Yes. Are you building and site?
Yeah, Tony Wonder.
We're not supposed to.
Tony can go.
Tony was otherwise detained. Tony was, uh, otherwise detained.
We also met the same day, April thirtieth. Uh, Ben reported that a nonprofit by the name of Communities First has shown some interest in Mary Craypole. Hopefully, that's a strong interest, and discussions are ongoing. Uh, RC Hunt reported that our maintenance people will be removing, uh, the doors, hardware, toilets, and all the kitchen equipment from Mary Craypole to the Little Dragons Building this summer. Uh, we had discussion regarding the academy move to the high school and the middle school, and Ben's gonna be talking about that later tonight. Uh, Ben reported that, uh, there was ongoing discussion at the GISD about county-wide contract with a, uh, company called Night Lock, the Lockdown Company, to provide, uh, security door locks for all the buildings, you know, all our schools. This would make more sense, uh, from a law enforcement perspective, uh, if everybody was under the same, or had the same type of locks, and they wouldn't have to go, they go to a dis, different district, have different lock come, different setup, uh, could create quite a bit of confusion. So there's ongoing talk about that, and it should be cheaper because of bulk purchasing. Uh, RC reported that, uh, the Consumers Energy LED program, where the lights were changed at decades, that we've, the, uh, there's been about a twenty-five percent savings on the monthly electrical bill, and they're working on the elementary buildings, uh, getting them switched over. And when that project is completed, we should see approximate, an approximate ten thousand dollar savings, uh, which is great. We had extensive discussion regarding the remodeling bids, and again, Ben's gonna talk about that tonight. Speed bumps at the middle school, thank goodness, have been removed.
I know, I love that.
And removable ones have been purchased, and they will be installed, and they're much lower and not as severe, and they can be removed, uh, in the winter till after snowplow.
Yes, thank you.
We reviewed and discussed a long list of summer projects, and you've got a copy of it in front of you, and it's extensive. If you've got any questions, that's why RC is sitting back there.
Are there any questions for Mike or RC?
They're referring to the speed bumps.
Um, one other thing, are you done, Mr. A?
Yes.
Done, Mike? Okay. Uh, one other thing I forgot to mention in my superintendent's report, um, this November, we have three open seats, um, for school board, so, um, Mr. Angle, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Sapannick, um, four-year term, and, uh, the filing deadline is July twenty-fourth by four P.M. Um, there's a hundred dollar filing fee, and, uh, the, the filing location is the Genesee County Clerk's Office, and so anybody that's interested, we encourage you to, um, put in for that and file. I do have the required forms for any of you that are here that would like to file and put your affidavit in.
Mr. Jones, I'm glad you're writing the date down.
So, and, uh, we'd encourage anyone, I, I know that it was nice to have a very good response and turnout when we had to, um, we had the, you know, opportunity to appoint Mr. Jones. We had a nice turnout, um, for that, and, and hopefully that'll be a sign of, of people getting interested in the potential for running for office, so.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks twice.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks.
Okay.
I didn't say thanks, Gary, when you were there.
I know, you're kind.
Thanks, Karen.
I was on vacation.
Thank you.
Okay, we have informational items on our agenda, uh, questions from the previous board meeting.
Yeah, I just, uh, sent you an email today, uh, Mr. Angle had asked about the Excel document, you'll have that in your email. Um, also, there was obviously several board comments, uh, from a number of people. I sent an email to you today that, uh, went out to this, this evening to the parents at the high school, um, on Mr. Fitzgerald's situation, and then the other question that came up, or comment, um, we have successfully made, uh, alternate arrangements in case we do have a large, uh, turnout at a board meeting in which we need to move the meeting to an alternate location, uh, so we have, we have made arrangements for that to occur.
Okay. Also, under informational items, we have the non-certified staff employment, and, um, Mike, I think you talked about the payment of bills, the bills that were reviewed. Correct? Anything else? Okay. Uh, going on to number eight, board discussion items, the Neola policy, the final reading for technology and background checks.
Yeah, this is, uh, I know you've, you've all had access to this and, and looked at it several times, um, a couple just things before you vote on it. There are very few options in this particular one, they're mostly, uh, new, um, new, uh, policies. If you look at page one of five.
Do you need copy?
Yeah, that would probably be helpful. Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Oh, I'm gonna need to look at that one, man. Cut that one, Gary.
This is pad.
We're gonna throw you across here.
Anybody else? Right. Yeah, I have, too many, I guess too many. What do I need?
You've got the two, right?
Yeah.
I think this is just, you need a bottom to that one. It should just be two, yeah.
Anybody else? Maybe though. Yep, you're good.
So, um, just to, just to highlight a couple of areas where we have, you know, wanna make sure we're clear on the decision before you vote on it, so, um, page one of five is gonna be seventy-five forty oh five, so, seventy-five forty oh five, page one of five. Seventy-five forty dot oh five, and it's gonna be in the first one, that's, it says information and technology collection supplement at the top of this document.
Which page you say, then, one of, or, one of five?
Seventy-five forty point oh five. Yep, you got it. One of five, yep.
Oh, one of five, okay.
Yep, one of five. Um, so on page one of five, essentially, anytime you see those parentheses, that means there's a choice to be made, so, my recommendation here, it says personal email accounts on providers other than the district's email system may be blocked at any time, um, shall be blocked at any time, will create a situation where we're policing anyone that uses personal email ever, you know, and we know that that isn't always the case. And then down at the bottom where it talks about districts shall not send or forward mass emails even if the emails contain district business without prior approval, uh, that's usually done at the site, at the site administrator. Um, so that just represents kind of a practice there.
So we're gonna go main block and site administrator?
That would be my recommendation unless there's any objection. Um, the next page, two of five, um, this one is one really that feeds into the technology director. Um, if the staff member's unsure whether he has adequate storage to subscribe to an RSS feed, that's something that Travis would be in charge of helping with, so. And then in terms of authorized block email from listservs or other emails received by staff members, we just check but if it becomes excessive versus tracking the number of megabytes that would come there, so, that would be our recommendation for that. And then on the very bottom, it says, uh, questions should be directed to the technology director, it's just versus, we don't have, we don't call our people IT staff. Again, on page four of five, um, emails that are sent or received during the district's email service are automatically retained. Um, we have a, what's called an archiving system, so emails that are sent or received are archived on, we use, uh, Google or Gmail, um, those are automatically stored. And then again, technology director, so, I mean, these aren't, these aren't big decisions, it's just making sure you know where, you know, where we were planning on checking. Authorized use and training on page five of five, um, this is basically that they, everybody has to sign a acceptable use form each year, and so that would be annually. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we take it, I mean, if you wanna take it, we can, but this last line that says, "Board members and staff will receive, uh, training, um, regarding the use and retention of, of email annually," um, that can be interpreted a lot of ways, but, you know, it's, if they're signing the form, they're acknowledging when they fill out the form, that they understand that. Um, if you, if we go to the other one, we've gotta get all of the board trained in, I mean, every single year, so, that would be one that I would say, probably don't wanna take that one. The same, um, boxes are checked, and the next section is just for students, so instead of staff, we're directing it to technology director versus IT, so they're all the same Um, very few choices in the next pack, this is a big one on seclusion and restraint. Um, this one is one where you will need to make a decision so you can provide some input on where you wanna go with it, but, um, for each staff group, we have to decide, um, if you look at, uh, fourteen twenty-one, page four of five. So this one right here, it says volume thirty-two, number one.
I got that.
And then it would be, uh, policy fourteen twenty-one.
Okay.
Page four of five. Um, and this again is just gonna be replicated for each of the different groups, so there's an administration of students, a staff, professional staff, so on. Um, we need to make a decision on whether or not applicants must submit at the district's expense, um, their, uh, fingerprinting. So fingerprinting, the common practice and what we have adhered to is that when you apply for the job, you do need to pay for your fingerprints, um, but there's an option here if you wanted to pay for people to have their fingerprints. So that's just if you have any strong, if you wanna pay for people's fingerprints or stick with the current practice.
How much do you?
It's about fifty dollars.
At what point do they have to submit their information, after they've been selected or offered?
I think.
Correct, yeah, so, for example, if we were to hire a professional staff member, if they're coming from another district, they will likely have already had their, uh, fingerprints done, and so it's a matter of sending authorization so that the Michigan State Police can release that, they do it all digitally now. Um, if they're a new employee and they've not worked in the state, or they haven't worked in a public school, um, if they're selected for a position, there's typically a period of paperwork that needs to be done, and usually the employee is responsible to pay for their fingerprinting. And it's usually a one-time expense, but they, they update that, they're gonna be updating that every few years, but, um, the fingerprinting happens at, at the time of hire, typically at the employee's expense, or the future employee's expense, so. It would just be a decision on whether you wanna pay for it, or.
How do most districts do that?
The employees pay for it.
At that point.
They've already been interviewed and accepted.
Yeah, that's right. At that point.
Well, before they, before they would be hired, they would have to complete the, the fingerprinting.
Right, but if they get to that, if they get to a fingerprint point, we basically said we want to hire you.
Unless you, unless you.
Correct, unless that comes back bad.
Correct.
I mean, personally, I think we should pay for it, but not a hill I'm gonna die on.
I, I agree with Ken, I think it'd be another carrot throughout the candidate, it's a hard time getting candidates, people to apply, it's just another carrot.
Yeah, that would.
It's a benefit.
Are we talking twenty dollars a year, are we talking two thousand dollars a year? Do you have any idea of how many?
Yeah, that'd be a good start.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be an upwards of a thousand dollars a year.
If you hire ten people, it's five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
You're saving ten thousand dollars in the waiting space.
I mean, if you hire ten people, it's five hundred dollars.
That's true.
It's a carrot, it's a benefit.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's not a lot of cost, so that, that's fine, if you wanna go that route.
No objections.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, when we submit these policies, we're, we're voting on the district providing the fingerprinting cost to potential employees, any other?
Fifty dollars a piece, right?
Yep. It, it could change.
Their mouths, right.
I mean, it's, it's fifty to fifty-five, I've, you know.
That's only for new hires who's never worked in the state.
Correct, yes. You got it.
Yeah, how often is that?
How good is that, how good is that service, uh, that fingerprint? Let's just say they're here six months a year, can they carry that with them? Let's just say they get a, they move out of state, or they, they move within the state, but, uh, they move to another district.
Yeah.
Can they still use that same?
They can, yeah, it's stored in the MSP system, and they have to fill out some paperwork to release the fingerprints to their next district, or.
Okay.
We would have to get it from somebody coming from another district. Yep.
And if they got arrested nine months, twelve months down the road, we would get a hit that they were arrested for some reason or another.
Yeah, that's that.
Well, that's in our policy, if you are arrested, you're supposed to notify the district.
Right, but I, you know what we say about leave?
Ben?
Yeah.
Saying so.
Okay. All right, so, um, let's go with, uh, the, the next page is on, um, it's policy eighty-three twenty-one, page one of fifteen.
Geez. May I, I may press that one, it's all right.
Mr. Delacorte, he'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Um, Ben is correct that, that often, uh, will work the district, but sometimes they don't. Uh, there is a law called, uh, section twelve thirty D of the revised school code, which makes it, it, either a misdemeanor or felony depending on what they got arrested for, uh, to fail to report, uh, themselves, so there's mandatory, uh, requirement for them to report. Uh, you can cancel their contract, void their, uh, employment agreement, and fire them if they don't, and they can go to jail, uh, also if they don't. So there's kind of a double, uh, safety catch there, they have to report themselves or face, uh, criminal penalties, and the district will often be alerted by law enforcement.
And, and to piggyback on that, as you remember, that more recent, thank you, uh, that more recent, um, policy that we talked about, which is the, kind of that ongoing regular, um, sweep that we do, that regular, uh, check, um, you know, that's, that's also something that's a new layer of protection. So on policy eighty-three twenty-one, page one of fifteen, um, where it says local agency security officer, this is really just managing the digital data and technology, um, for, uh, you know, the criminal justice security place. Um, I put the technology director there because, um, later on, uh, I, myself is listed if, if there's an appeal, so, just goes like that, so. Other than that, they're pretty straightforward.
Moving on, we have a discussion about the Schwartz Creek Academy and the presentation.
Yeah, so, um, wanted to just, uh, have a further and deeper conversation about the academy's, um, placement for next year. Um, we had an interesting situation, we sent a couple of staff members out to, um, see a program out on the west side of the state, it is a cyber school. Um, you're probably all familiar with the fact that there are a lot of cyber schools that are popping up all over the state of Michigan. Um, many of those cyber schools operate with a completely different set of rules, and public schools are often left trying to provide a digital service in a way that, you know, is difficult to compete with that private, that private approach. So one of the things that we're pretty excited about, there's a school out in the west side of Skate Hamilton, and they have actually partnered with a technology group that does, um, they, they, they do a cyber school within their district. And, um, for all intents and purposes, what we do at the academy is a little bit different than, um, what they do, and I think we have a lot of positive things going on with that, but the academy is different than it used to be. If you remember years ago, it had, it was a butt-in-the-seat program, we had, it was an alternative education program, it, it allowed a certain type of student to come there if they needed to make up credits, those types of things. What we've noticed over the last couple of years in particular is that a lot of our students are actually. What we've noticed over the last couple of years in particular is that a lot of our students are actually homeschool students. We have middle school students and even some younger students. We have students that are not actually reporting to the building per se, but they are getting their education through us, even though they could go to, say, a typical cyber school and anybody that opens up a cyber school. And then those dollars go to those different cybers. So what we're looking at is a, we're having conversations with the staff at the academy within our district about kind of the rebrand, if you will, for the academy and looking at really what our academy has become as a cyber school with the option of having the face-to-face mentorship, having a more of a community feel, smaller feel with clubs and organizations that allow them to experience some different enrichment things that the typical, the typical cyber school does not offer. So what we have is a pretty kind of unique opportunity. I think it's worth definitely looking into and it is really what our academy has become. I think there are maybe some unfair perspectives and maybe not historically, but now there are some unfair perspectives about what the academy is. And we have a lot of students that are doing a lot of community service, a lot of really good things. And a lot of those students actually don't report directly, especially on a daily basis. So we've had some conversations, we've run, we've walked around, we talked at the last building in site committee meeting. I've got a tentative drawing that I'd like to show you of what it would look like if the academy went to the middle school. I think I mentioned it briefly the other day. We already have kind of had some conversations and know what the academy would look like at the high school. The high school, the high school involves a significant amount more of construction than the middle school. The middle school has a natural separate wing that can be closed off so that students from the middle school or the cyber school or the academy, whichever name it becomes, would not have the ability to enter into that, that facility. We've had some conversations with the academy staff about how that would look for PE and so on and so forth. And it actually requires little, very, very minimal construction other than creating the egress doorways that are locked down so that students can't come in between the two different buildings and walling off a couple of doorways. And so you'll see kind of my makeshift drawing, this was an edit that the architect wasn't able to get in in time for the board meeting, but the far back two classrooms, there's actually an open walkway and that wall is doored off. So the entrance of it is by these bathrooms right here. And so the other nice part about it is that this area down on the, on the, on the bottom left of the page, there's an accordion wall there, which allows the students to have more of a campus-type feel in a cyber setting where they can go in, they can have their meals eaten there. That's a, that's a space that can be used very effectively for gathering. And then if it was needed for a classroom space, that wall can be closed off, so it's kind of nice, there's already an existing structure there. So this results in very little construction cost. You know, I've had some conversations with the staff at the high school and at the middle school both about this. And you know, it's, the middle school is a, is a building that does have a significant amount of space and our building that has the most space, quite frankly. And separate parking area, separate entrance, and the students would be completely separate. So it seems to be a very good option and I just wanted to kind of present that to you, let you know that that's my recommendation at this point. I think both financially and logistically, it makes a lot of sense. Some of you have been able to get over there and see that kind of what we were talking about. And I just want to make sure, if anybody had any questions, you could ask.
You did say there was ample parking over to the...
Yes, there's a, there is ample parking for, that's separate from the, the middle school. So it would be its own little area.
So a concern of mine is, there's no way that the academy and the middle school kids would miss.
Correct, so if you look right over here, this hallway is, this essentially is the media center right here. So students could get out for fire code issues if they have to get out for fire, but these doors are locked, you can't get in this way. Okay, same thing with these doors. So you could get into this vestibule, but then you're locked in and the only way you're getting out is to go outside. So that creates a lockdown situation where you can't get into, the students can't get into either space.
So when we have fire drills or drills, obviously they'll be kept separate.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
But in the case there's a real emergency, you can't, but on a drill, they would still be kept separate, so like...
Yes, yeah. The only, the only dynamic might be, you know, if these two classrooms, because we have to run everything by, you know, the fire inspector. So if these two classrooms had to go out, they might be exiting in a fire drill at the same time, but they could, they would go to separate locations.
That'd be a number one concern of the middle school parent.
Oh absolutely, yeah.
Because of the huge age difference.
And if this is the direction we go, we'll definitely do a, a meeting there and explain.
Can we, one thing I would say is suggestion to also cover up some of Tony's concerns is on this door here, the one you penciled in, is put an alarm on it because once someone would come into that area, while they can't get in that door, someone can hit the panic bar and let them in.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So it's not, it's not like they can't get in the middle school. If I text you to meet you there at ten fifteen and you hit the panic bar, you're in the building.
An alarm would be nice.
So if alarms on that door, that would at least let everybody know that the door's been opened.
Yeah, and actually probably both of those doors.
That's fine too.
Yeah.
But otherwise, I mean, anybody could go push the panic bar and you're in the building.
And cameras. Can we install a camera there also?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually have a camera down this hallway, we would install a couple more. It can be monitored by the office staff.
Then you'll know who pushed the panic bar.
Exactly.
Now you mentioned that there are some middle school students that take advantage of the program.
Yep.
Would they continue to take advantage of it at home or elsewhere or could they actually attend in this?
Absolutely, I think that what will happen is we'll be able to grow the program in a cyber setting because we're going to actually, it, it's not the traditional academy. So we've been calling it the academy for, kind of under its same auspices for the last couple of years, but it's really shifted to more of a cyber school.
And I think we forget that they were with the little children, like they would go over there and read to them and, you know, they interact with the little children too, so it's not like that.
Yeah, these are just the concerns from the middle school.
A sixteen-year-old's going to have a whole lot more to come with a fourteen-year-old than what they do with a four-year-old.
Yep.
So I think, I think that's a...
Yeah, for sure.
A trivial flag.
Staffing, are we going to have to, do we retain the same number of staffing or less or?
Well, we staff it according to student enrollment, right? So if we grow the enrollment, then we have to add mentor teachers because we have people who are on the other end of the students that are even taking these classes online. So they're taking them online, but then they have somebody to guide them through the process, through the software, engage in that.
Do you have a approximation of the savings between not having to do the high school and going to the middle school?
So I don't have any, I don't have any hard numbers of cost analysis, but I can promise you it'll be cheaper. The estimate that, that is costed out at the high school is a hundred and thirty thousand. This in verbal conversations is probably more in the fifties to sixties, so.
The high school is the oldest part of the school too, right, when we were talking about a little bit?
It is.
Yeah, I think if we just tighten up that door.
Put an alarm on it.
Well, that, cameras and...
I like that idea. That's all I have for that.
All right, school safety discussion, door systems and armed security.
All right, so, right here, I talked about this a little bit. This is a system that is being implemented. It's actually a company out of Genesee County called NightLock. These are essentially systems that would be installed in the floor and this is something... Uh, this is a different company actually.
But is that the one when we were in there, is that what it kind of is like when we were in the...
It's, it's actually a different company, but yeah, but there, the other one I have here as well. There, there are two, there are two pages. Here's another. Okay, all right. There you go. All right, so, so the NightLock system, as you can kind of see on this picture here, essentially what happens is that there's a plate that's installed in the floor, it's actually drilled in. And as you know, we've been exploring all different types of safety measures. How do we add additional pieces of safety as much as we possibly can to, you know, protect kids? We've been going, taking our staff through the Alice training and one of the big parts of that is that you barricade the door. So there's some time there that you're spent putting things in front of the door because, you know, what they found is that in active shooter situations, it's very frustrating to them, they can't get in the door and if it's blocked. This actually prevents a door from being opened, so you slide that piece of aircraft-grade aluminum in and it makes it impossible to open the door. I think it's several thousand pounds of, of force that's required to open the door. Mike talked about this already, but one of the things that's an advantage of this particular system would be the fact that around the county, this is seemingly, I sit on the superintendent's safety committee for Genesee County and our conversations in that committee have been, this is the direction that most of the districts are leaning. If we go that way, there'd be a cost savings as well as the fact that a law enforcement officer doesn't have to think in the event of an emergency, do we have this system or this system? It's, you know, it's, it's kind of pretty much standard and unified.
Two questions, actually more than that. At our school resource officer meeting, we had a gentleman come. His system was outrageous, however, one of his selling points was, and I don't know if there's any truth to it, his system was the only one that met the fire code in the state of Michigan.
Yep.
Don't know if that's accurate, so, and this wasn't the system. Two, is there a mechanism so that you can release it from the outside of the door?
Great question, so absolutely, you're right, that was the, the claim and the concern. We have a letter, because we were concerned about that as well, so at the superintendent's safety committee, we got a letter from the state fire marshal. The state fire marshal has ultimate jurisdiction over schools, school buildings in the state of Michigan. There are some local fire inspectors who have said, "If we put these in, we're going to shut you down." But the state fire marshal has a letter saying that as long as you have, so getting back to your second question, the device that allows you to open it from the outside, and there's a very specialized device that a couple of people in the district and law enforcement officers would carry that would allow this to be open from the other side of the door.
I'd strongly suggest you see how easy that device works.
Yeah, so is it, is it similar to the one we saw?
It is, so that's my next one. This is a, this is a little...
And then one last question to that is, is obviously you'll come up with a policy, but you're going to need to come up with, part of your policy is to keep that hole maintained.
Oh, that's true.
Because otherwise you go stick something in it and that's useless. That thing, yeah. I mean, I can't believe kids would put anything in that hole. But, but I mean, they just, they just might.
That's right.
So, but, okay.
So the locking handle, then, the locking handle is actually kept in a lock box or in a box?
It's in a box and you take that piece of aircraft-grade aluminum and you drop it in there and it locks. And it's very quick, I don't know if you saw...
They, they had these at the school board conference, they, they, they worked great.
Yeah.
So the one we saw when Ken Spansy was in the fire, he saw.
That's what I'm passing out right there.
Yeah, that, if it's the same one we read, that dude's off the hook.
Yeah, he said it was free, you remember, right?
Yes, he did.
Nothing's free.
There's nothing that's free to see.
And Mike was like, hold on.
Yeah.
When he said that, that was one of the few times I didn't open my mouth.
Yeah.
He told me, soon as he said it was, no, soon as he said it was free, he totally insulted my intelligence.
So, so this one is called the boot. This is made by the lockdown company and as you can see by the picture, this is significantly, I held it, it's much sturdier. You know, it's very heavy, it's, it's a very heavy duty. One of the advantages to the lockdown company's boot system is that on top of it being a little bit, or quite a bit more durable, it has some integrated features with the box itself and there's a light that flashes when there's, when it's installed and it's integrated and all this other kind of stuff. So in any event, it is very, very, it is much more costly than with NightLock. And so I wanted to show you the different things that we've been looking at. It sounds like you've had an opportunity to see some of these as well. My, my recommendation is that we participate countywide and see what kind of pricing we can get on NightLock because it seems to be the more cost-effective. But this is a good measure that we can capitalize on to give us yet another layer of protection, you know, in the event of an emergency.
So they'll do a master agreement, for example, and then we just sign on as...
Correct. Yep, and, and that way we would get significantly reduced cost.
Yeah, they can't, if he does, if they get the whole county or even most of the county, they need to cut that price about half.
How does this work now?
So this, so do you see this, you can see this plate on the floor and then you see the kind of grooved metal piece? That piece of aircraft-grade aluminum, it comes out of the box and anybody can put it in if there's a lockdown and it drops right in there and it's very quick, yeah, and it actually goes, the plate is in, in the floor. So like Ken was saying, you got to make sure you can't, those don't get plugged up. But, but other than that, it's very... What'd you say?
There's got to be a simpler device than that.
It's pretty simple.
When you watch it.
I know where you watch it now, imagine the chaos, you're grabbing kids. And then you have to shut the door and bend over and put the plate in.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, remembering where you put it, because you're going to have to hide it from the kids.
Well, we'll, if you're, if, if we go to, I'm going to get some more information in the next few weeks. At our next building in site, I can bring potentially the consultant in to give the demonstration so you can see what it looks like. You can actually see it.
So will this one be like what we saw, like will it go directly then to the decision? Will it handle, it's not like what that guy gave you.
No, it's not, it doesn't have all those bells and whistles.
Which we don't really publicly...
That, that would...
That was borderline ridiculous.
Yeah, so it, this is, this is a much more cost-effective, I think.
Yeah, for sure, I just didn't know if it did some of the training.
No, it doesn't do any of all that other stuff.
Versus moving all that heavy furniture, which, which right now is the alternative.
The, the concern you have with that is, is, is how easy is it? If you have someone in there that's unconscious or they can't open the door, it's how, you know, what's the risk of them getting back into that room?
Right.
You know, if you have an interior classroom where there's no window, you know, how easy is it to get that out? So that would, that would be my only question, because I mean, you're literally locking everybody out.
Yeah, there's got to be a simpler solution to have them try and line up.
Trade market.
That's, that, that's, that's actually pretty simple. This is at school board conference, it's actually simple, but I mean...
I mean it's simple in a calm situation.
Correct. Well, my question's going to be is, you know, where's the teacher going to hide it or all the teachers, you know, I mean, when you break that policy, it's going to have to have some thought with it, you know, who's going to maintain that hole?
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's a lot more to ask me.
There, there's...
Moving a bunch of furniture around, freaking out, that's...
So do, do we want to have them ask them to come and show it to us?
And students.
Five of them.
Yeah, I would like that.
Do they do the install as well too?
They do, although we can save some costs and RC's here and I haven't told them this yet, but we can install them and if we install them, you know, it's pretty simple and it's probably not worth the cost of them installing it.
Four screws.
Yep.
A whole lot of drilling.
And check the holes constantly.
But if you want me to bring them out, I can bring them to a board meeting, I could have them come to building in site, whatever you want.
Why don't, why don't we wait and see what the county does first or the ISD does first? I mean, if, if, because if they don't...
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that, that we'll, we'll definitely get more information on that shortly. And I have indicated our interest in being a part of it, but there's nothing formalized yet, so we can wait and see what that is. The other piece I wanted to talk to you about is armed security. Brought this up before about the concept of a private security force. In the event of an emergency, having somebody that's able to, you know, apply, you know, be there to protect in, in the event of a shooter. We have been having some conversations, I've worked with the metro police authority on, having some conversations with several of you about part-time officers. We're committed to keeping our liaison officer here, so we have a full-time committed liaison officer. But what, there's a couple of different avenues. You can go down the road of a private security force, meaning that you as, we as a district are looking at bringing on some people... bringing on some people who might be retired police officers, um, vetting that process through somebody that can kind of oversee a team like that. There's actually a company that I met with this past week who, um, who does this. This is their business. They, they actually are retired police officers and this is what they do. So that, there's some advantages there in terms of liability. And then, uh, I think probably the most simple solution in, in the short term is part-time officers, you know, in terms of costs and everything else. But just wanted to engage in a conversation to see if you have any thoughts on that. I'm not interested. There are some districts that have DM Burr, for example, or other companies that have people that they are putting into schools for this purpose. And I just feel like it's really important that anybody that is, you know, gonna be carrying a firearm, receive, you know, weapon retention training, target acquisition training, safety training, that, that somebody that's actually been in, in law enforcement, had a career in that, uh, is much more likely to be able to, um, understand how to handle themselves in those situations. So didn't know if you had any strong opinions. I'm continuing to work on that. I can update you as we go. Any thoughts on that?
Well, we did talk about cost, okay? What is the cost of the retired police officer as opposed to, would we be able to get maybe other police officers working the metro?
Yeah, so typically a part-time officer is gonna be under twenty dollars an hour. If you go with a private security force, um, like the company that I met with, they're probably more twenty-five to twenty-seven hours an hour. Per officer.
And how many would we be looking at? What, what's our budget and how many officers?
Well, this isn't a line item in our current year's budget. And we'd be looking at at-risk categorical money for next year's budget, um, depending on how we do this. So our plan would be to figure out an approach and a, and a staffing plan for this process for the next school year so that we'd start it in the fall. So that's kinda, that answers your question.
I like the idea of, uh, you know, I'd certainly like to keep the cost as low as we can, but I'd want, wanna keep the best qualified people there. Uh, seasoned retired officers that are very well-trained, in great shape and, um, that have, uh, just really good, uh, a resume, you know, that, uh, can be in the hallway.
Yeah, and the great shape thing is important, too. You know, to be able to keep up and, and do those things, which, you know, is important in that situation, so.
So physically fit.
Yeah.
My only two cents I had to pin is, I, I, I said, I think if you work something out with metro, even Clayton, uh, if you, you know, as far as Deke went, or, uh, I don't know who actually has Marsh. I don't know if that's Flint Township or not.
Flint Township.
Flint Township.
I don't think Flint, I don't, I don't think Flint Township does much part-time stuff. But if you work something out with these people, you can put a, you can put a police officer in that building, I think is cheaper, cheaper than you can hire just about anybody. And, and have a police officer there.
Who could make misdemeanor arrests and felony arrests?
Well, you can definitely make the felony arrest. And misdemeanors might be kinda questionable, but, but I mean, if nothing else, you've got a police officer there. You know, when you get on the radio and you go, you can ask that jurisdiction, hey, I've got this. Can we, can we act? Yes. So I mean, a radio contact, now you have a police officer there with police powers for that jurisdiction. We do that all the time when someone should, you know, if Swartz Creek would call or Clayton would call for an alarm, you know, all you gotta do is make the request, they call, make any request.
Right.
Now all of a sudden, now you have that police officer. So-
Right.
To me, the police officer thing makes a whole lot more sense.
Maybe they're all day.
Is the sheriff still deputizing?
Patrolling.
All day.
No, because-
We'd be able to set their hours.
One at every building.
They're not, Ken, we would have to look at that.
I don't, I don't think so. They're, I, I don't know what they're doing. They're doing, they're pushing really hard to do their own thing. I don't know the exact number, I'm doing this from memory, cause I read it in the paper. But they were charging, and I don't know if that was to finish the school year or a school year. Clile High School just brought a deputy out there and it was fifty-two or fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Well, if you do the math on a hundred and eighty days, eight hours a day, fifteen dollars an hour, puts you right around twenty-five grand. So for less than twenty-five thousand dollars, if you did six hours a day-
Right.
You, you could put an officer-
Patrol.
Put, patrolling and hit your schools, or you could, no, I mean, the, you're not paying the benefit package with a part-time officer and you're not paying the, the rate of pay. So, I mean, that-
But I would have to think that if we got full-time officers-
I wouldn't take a full-time officer.
That the sheriff-
Right, all you do with the sheriff, you're gonna get a full-time officer.
No. If, if we got Metro or Clayton, I can't believe that he wouldn't deputize him. So that they've got full power.
No comment. I don't, I don't think he will because he's trying to put his own deputies there. He's got, I think he's got five or six districts right now. So why would, you know, and, and he doesn't need to. We don't, we don't need that person to be deputized. Cause at the blink on the radio, hey, I, I need a, I need a request here, now you have police powers. I mean, I'd bounce from Argentine to Linden all day. We have a common understanding with the two municipalities and I, I'm, I'm an officer in Argentine. They have no issue with, when I go to Linden to act. So it's, it's a pretty simple solution to, to that. You just work it out with two municipalities.
So, any other thoughts?
Personally, I would prefer somebody who was highly trained and had real-life experience versus someone who has maybe eight or ten hours of training, but no real-life experience. And is willing to be around.
Yeah.
And I'm like, well, if we could, I would want everyone, want every building. I mean, I would want just one here or there.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you have, if you have a part-time officer that has the ability to be, to be able to patrol.
Be so assorted, though.
The patrol is very helpful, cause then they can get to different buildings.
You could go to Elm, you could have one do Elm's and-
If you did six hours a day at twenty-five grand a year, you know, you're, you're, you're a hundred and twenty-five thousand just for the elementaries. So I mean, it, it would be kinda pricey. I personally, I think it'd be overkill, but, um-
Is there value in visibility versus having somebody on site?
That's just it, is, is, you know, you make rounds. You know, you, you know, park the car out front and keep a different schedule and-
And I guess that people are seeing that, that, like, they don't know that somebody's watching. Yeah.
You don't keep the same schedule, people guessing.
You know, and I mean, and you could have an officer in every building and if the first person, the guy walks in the door and shoots is the officer, you don't have an officer anymore. You're right back where you started. So I mean, there, you know, that's, that's the real, that's the, the real-life threat of it. Is if you're sitting at the desk and Joe Blow walks in and he just walk, hey, how are you guys doing? Boom. Well, now the officer's gone. So, you know, unless you've got ten of them in there, I mean, it just, it, you just have to be realistic about it. I mean, you can only make things so safe. But, but I mean, you can easily work that thing out with the jurisdiction, cause metro has everything except, uh, well, right now they're even playing out in Gaines, so. Only one they'd have to communicate with is Swartz Creek and, um, Flint Township, or excuse me, Clayton, Clayton and Flint Township.
So is this something you can bring back to us for the recommendation?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to get, have a discussion about it, let you know I'm working on that. And we'll have something, uh, to, to propose to you, um, for the fall, um, school year.
And Marsh is metro.
Yes, more, yeah.
Cause Flint Township's on the other side.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think it's just Elm's and Deke are the only two.
Yeah, okay.
Well, well, Gaines, obviously.
Okay. All right. We are down to number nine, board action review, or items, uh, EOL of policy approval for technology and background checks. I need a motion.
Support.
Um, who is that? Tony? So Stacy and Tony?
Tony's like, yeah.
Any, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was rude.
Okay. Little Dragon Learning Center SEAL bids approval.
Before we vote on this, the, um, the, uh, SEAL bid process is something that we do whenever you're doing a large construction project. This was run by E and L Construction. They're here tonight, I think, so. Essentially what happens is we have to put out the very specific types of things that, um, and the specifications. So for example, the sealed bid pack that they're bidding on is, is a lengthy document. And they have to bid to those specs. The, uh, the recommendations are there for your review and we're excited to get started so that we can meet our deadlines and get the project commencing.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. I hope you were done. All right. Okay. Uh, so I need a motion. Tom.
Support.
Stacy, Ryan? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We gotta sign up for this one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Talking about that.
All right, uh, moving on. We have now reached the, uh, point of our meeting where it's, uh, it's time for public comment opportunity. If you'd like to address the board, please stand and state your name. I do have a card already submitted. Anybody? Mr. Lawson?
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand this down to Joanne so she can file it.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, Mr. Minka, your board member, board trustees and the public. My name is David Lawson. I just wanna step by, introduce myself tonight. I am a candidate for the fifty-first district state house, uh, which includes up in this neighborhood, Clayton Township, Flushing, Gaines, Argentine, and the communities of Linden, Fenton and Fenton Township. Swings in Oakland County, picks up Holly Grove and Rose, and then back up into Genesee County, captures Atlas. So ironically, it kinda looks like the letter L, so, which is a perfect year this year. A little background about myself, I'm a, the former elected official for the city of Linden where I served for eighteen years. Uh, six years as a member of the city council and the last twelve years as its mayor. I stepped down in twenty sixteen. Previously worked at the University of Michigan, both the Annenberg and Flint campuses. At the Flint campus, I was the director of government relations, so I was a lobbyist for higher education. So worked with the governor's office and the legislature and the appropriations committee to derive funding to my university, basically. In addition to all that fun work, I'm also a PhD candidate and I'm working on my dissertation at Indiana State University right now. So I'm a full-time PhD kinda guy, uh, and I'm a good househusband for my wife, who's a public school teacher in Flint schools. So I make her breakfast, make her lunch, pack her car up, and volunteer a couple days a week in her classroom to help out. I'll be swinging by again tomorrow to drop off some student artwork that we had in display in downtown Flint as part of a student art show. Uh, so one of the, there's three reasons I'm running this year for the state legislature, especially as a former official, is, it's about communities and that they matter in this state and they matter in the district. So as I mentioned, we have nine townships, two cities and two villages. Only the key issue for me is revenue sharing. Uh, over the last sixteen years, local units of government have been shorted eight billion dollars in this state under both Democratic and Republican administrations for revenue sharing. For the fifty-first district, that'd be twice the fifteen million dollars. Uh, for the city of Swartz Creek, even though it's not in my district, uh, they've been shorted two million dollars for Clayton Township, uh, one point three million, and for Gaines Township, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So as you think about the transportation funding you all pay for kids to ride on the, on horrible crappy roads that we have, and the money's still not coming yet from the fees that were raised back in twenty fifteen to fix these roads, uh, it's only gonna get worse before it gets better. The second issue I wanna work on is really tied to the third one, is about the educational attainment level of residents in this state. If you remember last fall, Amazon decided not to come to Michigan or at least put us on the shortlist because we didn't, we don't have mass transit, obviously, and we don't have a highly educated workforce, which is understandable because we were manufacturing-based. So those jobs were low-skill and high wages. Those jobs today are high-skill and high wages. So we need to drive up the educational attainment level of our kids. And part of that is a program, I'm, I'm pitching to, to school boards, I met with some superintendents and board members and teachers to get some feedback, but a, a program to go to a, a balanced calendar on a voluntary basis by every district. And a balanced calendar, the approach would have three components. The first would be a planning grant to see if it's a good fit for your district, to start with the elementary schools first. If it is a good fit, then of course you need to do the research and talk to your, your faculty and staff and the parents, obviously. Then the second part would kick in, which would be capital outlay funding from the state to upgrade those buildings. Cause you certainly can't put a youngster and teachers in a building that's a hundred degrees over line August. That's just not sensible. And a lot of our school buildings are built for nine months' use. They're not built for year-round use because it's based on the old model being an agrarian society. Well, we don't do that anymore. But we need to have those kids, when they come back every fall, to have, to have that knowledge retention. So as the kids move through the grade levels from elementary into middle school, then that building flips. The same process happens, you get a planning grant, you get the capital outlay funding if you decide to go forward, you get the building up to speed. And then the final portion about this is a ten percent increase in per-people funding because it's gonna, that'll help hopefully solve the problem about the transportation issues tied to intercession weeks off. Allow you to do the programming during those intercession weeks. It could be camps for STEAM, for athletics, whatever you deem is necessary for your own district, basically. And so as a local official, I'm all for local control, basically. So, and the last part, real quick on this, I know, uh, just real quick, is a, a new scholarship program for kids that go to, go to university, two-year school, a trade school, and provide that last dollar funding so that they can get out with little to no debt as possible and that they stay in the industry for years after. So those are the three things I'm gonna be working on, be knocking on the doors in this neighborhood. So I just wanna come by and say aye and introduce myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Good luck. Thank you. Anyone else? No?
I just wanna mention, David, you're a Michigan fan?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm sure you're gonna have Miss Jermaine's support.
Between my wife and I, I'm five degrees from you.
I am equal opportunity.
She's a tad of a state fan.
That's okay. Case of her university.
I, I have, I have testified in, in several, uh, senate and house subcommittees for healthcare. So I appreciate your interest in running for office.
I couldn't pass out, Karen, sorry.
I already showed it.
She already did it.
I'm like, he's out.
Don't look at my Mini Cooper, that's maize blue, babe.
Wow.
Thank you. Anyone else? Give you a second chance. All right. Okay. Comments and questions from the board? Anybody?